Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sri Gurunath Patthika Keshav. It's our pleasure and honored to host World of the Candidates for today. Thanks to all the audience for joining us today. Today we have Dan Ubert, Jackie McCoy, Meg Rix, Suzanne Veris, Julie Butler. I think Julie Hotoff will be joining us soon. Now, thank you much, our legislative committee chair, and our past president, Mr. Ran Navas, to moderate the board of education. Thank you.
Thank you, Sri. Thank you, my wonderful guests. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. The PTA Council of Howard County has held quite a few forums over the years, and we hope this will be as successful as past ones. As you look out to the audience, you will see that we are not only speaking to an audience on a Wednesday on the school day, but you're also being recorded and will post this on the PTAC, I would say website, but technically YouTube site, providing links to everyone so that they can find out all the things that were discussed tonight. PTA Council Advocates for Children. Actually, the PTA advocates for children. The PTA Council is an organization that is the umbrella to assist all the local units. For everyone's information, this is not the only forum we're holding. We will be holding another forum with the county council candidates on May 25 at River Hill at 7:00 PM. That's two weeks from now. And on June 22, Mount Everest, we will do the other races, which will be the county execs as well as the state delegates, senators, members of this. Those, if you want to look at this information and share it with others, just simply go to more by web, PTAC, P T A C H C dot org, and share that with your friends of upcoming events. And that's where our official repository for this information is. PTA C A C is a countywide volunteer, nonpartisan organization. We are following guidelines provided by the National PTA hosting forums and trying to follow this as closely as reasonably possible here tonight. Questions that you see through here are provided by representative citizen responses and do not affect, do not reflect the official positions of PTA council or less other constituencies. All right, we've had a lot of changes in rapid order in the last few days of planning, but that's okay. We can work on the fly, quite honestly, as retention board members. We may have to work on the fly with rapidly changing situations. So, I apologize for the lack of prep time, but we're going to do a pop quiz. And this forum will be 90 minutes to keep it reasonable for our parents who are watching this online or here for this evening. You may stay briefly after work to discuss the issues with any of the members here. We will do a two-minute intro for every member. And then we're going to do something a little different than before. We're going to do a rapid-fire learning questions. Everyone gets an individual question. You may respond to other people's questions, but out of respect, please answer the original question asked first before trying to respond to a separate question. Final questions this evening will be coming directly from the audience. Please, anyone who has not got a card or anybody who wants a card, please contact any of our board members up front. Make sure you put the questions there, and they will sort them. Make sure we don't have any repeats. Communicate those in the second half. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. And thank you all the PTAC folks that put this together. I wasn't able to help out with this one. I'm Meg Rix. I parented three kids in Howard County public schools since 2009. I have somebody in schools here until 2030. I was senior this year, an eighth grader and a fourth grader. I'm working the outreach, um, and covering up feet. I've been a PTA advocate, a teaching advocate for over decades. Served as PTA president for four years. Treasurer, been on the floor of PTAC for four years. I was the treasurer of PTAC when no one else wanted to do it. And lately, I've been doing policy in the policy chair, and I've been on several policy review committees of this whole system. I'm also a scout leader, been doing that for nine years. And I currently work at a preschool, East Columbia School in Columbia, teacher's assistant there. And education and advocacy for children has been a big part of my life. And I've been very concerned about what were crowded schools, having grown up in Chicago and going to public schools that were severely overcrowded. And I faced a lot of challenges, a lot of poverty and a lot of resources. And I don't want to see those same problems continuing here with kind of lack of planning and lack of prioritization of that. Sorry, I said my time was up, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dumber.
Yeah, there we go. My name is Danny Dumber. Thank you so much, PTAC and everyone, for having us here tonight. Really appreciate the opportunity. I love PTAs in Howard County. I've been a PTA officer for two years now. I've been active in the PTA pretty much since my kids started in Howard County Public Schools. We have a sixth grader at Park Street Middle School and a third grader in Swansville Elementary School. And I've been active in rioting ways in the county. I'm on the operating budget review committee. I've been active in rioting and demonstrations. Public education is really important to me. I'm a public school proud myself. My parents gave me, sent me to great public schools like we all are doing for our kids. And it set me up academically for like, really gave me the tools to meet the challenges the way we want our kids to have those tools. When they both graduated, I went on to study public policy in the Harvard Kennedy School of Government. And in my career, I've worked in rioting roles in corporate world, in the nonprofit sector, in federal and local government. And really, one of the themes of my career has been helping complex organizations solve their problems through toolkit that I built, strategic planning, performance management, organization design. And that's really the lens I'm looking things through. And that's, I think, part of what I'm bringing to the board of it. We have amazing schools in Howard County. We have a legacy of amazing schools. But we're also facing real challenges. The pandemic has done a number on our schools and our kids and our teachers. And we're realistically a bit taking several years for us to take that and recover. And we need, you know, strong leadership on the board to make sure we get the right resources and the right places. In addition, the pandemic has really exposed some of the cracks in the foundation of our strong, proud house of public schools. We're going to be facing real shortages in staffing. We're facing undue budget crunches. So, the challenges are real, and I think we need strong leadership to continue to serve on board.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'm Jackie McCoy. I need to stand up. Sitting is not a good name for me. But I've been a Columbia resident for 29 years. Three of my children attended high school year, well, middle and high school year. And they graduated one copper's class all the way from college, born with challenges with learning. And then the other, the other two were, two of them were QTC. So, I've had experience with that. I personally live in Lexington. I hold a degree of accounting in the University of Maryland, and I also went back to school to get a master's degree in secondary education because all my three children, my three born to me, were born premature. Two were eleven weeks and one was sixteen weeks early. But fortunately, they're all healthy and whole. I am very, very committed to education because I realize what it took for them to get there around at a very early age. And I followed them all the way through. And because of that, I have such a passion for education. And I want all children to have an opportunity. And because of my learning challenge, not knowing it until I was in my late, late age, graduating from college without knowing it, but finally finding out when I went to college that I had this challenge, that it is not that it's a disability, it's a difference. And I want children to understand that having a disability is not an indication that you have a life that's going to be a struggle. And so, I'm in it for them. I'm in it for my two grandchildren, one who's about to start kindergarten and one who's about to become a middle schooler. And it's going to be a ride, but I'm in it to win it for them and all of the children.
Thank you. Please just hold my close and speak very loudly. You know a little bit of background on this.
Good evening. My name is Tuvie Adler, and thank you so much to everybody who's here this evening. My community service includes the Howard County Planning Board, Howard Community College Education Foundation Board, and Plan Howard 2030. I have a business background. My husband and I started a family business from our kitchen table like most families do. We put everything we owned into our startup. We started with one men's clothing store. We had to create everything, the leasing, the hiring, the inventory, the marketing, payroll, benefits, and on and on, just us. Long story short, we grew the business to 23 locations and created over 150 jobs. The point here really is that there's a developed skill to decision-making. You have to weigh the consequences and ask, what could be the unintended consequences? What will the best outcome be of their decisions and at what cost? We live with a mentality of how can we make this better and more efficient? We don't waste. Managing the financing is uppermost all the time. Common sense always and integrity in our own of others. My residential real estate career is very much the same. Each client has their own wants and needs. Every transaction is complex and different. There's a legal, financial, and emotional component to each. Their issues become my issues. Their goals become my goals. These develop skills along with having raised two children in Howard County Public Schools. And now I have two grandchildren in Howard County Public Schools. Give me a unique set of qualifications. All of this applies directly to being hardworking, focused, and effective member and serve as to the board of education. Thank you.
She's getting better. Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Susan Dryden. Thank you for coming here tonight and wanting to give the opportunity to actually talk to everybody here tonight. I am the Howard County President, fourth grade student, by rural Columbia. I attended all four Howard County schools. I graduated from Waddle Lake High. Currently, I have a son attending schools. He, his right guy, he's involved in sports. I went on from high school and I graduated from the University of Maryland College Department with a degree in Bachelor of Science. My background includes working with emotionally disturbed adolescents, psychiatric adult patients. I've also been in special education field when I really come to work. I work for the, with a lady in special ed department, and I was her right hand. I also, when I came back here, I worked in a lockdown facility for juveniles with emotionally disturbed, you know, mental illness and a cancerous hospital. So, I have a lot of experience with mental illness in children, in our own children. That's why I got into that field and I studied that. Coming back to Maryland, I worked in Howard County Schools as a teacher's assistant for special ed. And then I've also been a parent educator who substituted at this elementary dating those different, at different times, or by some time in elementary school. And I've also done some counseling. I've been a counselor at the Crisis Pregnancy, Pregnancy Center prior to shutdown. And I also have been a lay counselor. I believe that I have many skills that have benefited our children, especially experiencing all the things we've gone through with COVID and depression and just all the mental language that has brought on children and our families. So, I just thank you for this time, and I'm looking forward to the questions. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Monique Lurkers. I am a product of public education. One raised in North Jersey, two fatherless parents, four grandparents. I became a first of a generation, well, a graduate. And the commitment to education was still to give me fatherless parents. And so, as a mother now, I'm married, my husband continues, but I have three children. I as their, as their first parents, am still just a commitment to education in that. I have a two-year-old and eight-year-old, and a sixteen-year-old. I take the pre-possess of being a candidate for the Howard County Board of Education because I am a president of Howard County and a registered voter. However, one thing that's very, well, one of the things that I'd like to say to speak from my other co-candidates is that I have been a resident for one year. I see the need, even though the Howard County education system is very good for growing. I see the need for, and one of the things that I focus on and collect it is equity in education. I think that all children, if they're not truly learned and they can learn if once given, you know, basic means of food, shelter, clothing, they also have a sense of belonging, they feel safe, and they have a sense of self. I am a member of PTAC public school, the second grade and high elementary school. And I have been an obtainer for a long time in Jersey, my family, throughout their school life. And so, I appreciate the opportunity for the education, participating in this one. And I look forward to your questions.
Thank you very much. We have one member, Ms. Hotoff, will be arriving later. And we have one member who is something to write on short notice under a written statement. Thank you, PTA council organizers, all too close. Thank my fellow candidates, special thanks to all the audience for taking the time to listen and learn about the candidates who are members of school board representing. My name, actually his name, is Dr. Lynn Fennin Chen. I promise you, as you're a board member, to focus our schools on delivering the absolute best academic performance for all students. For more information on my background and qualifications, and I encourage you to take a flyer and visit my website, chenforre.com. Thank you. So, we're going to go into the rapid-fire questions. Clearly, we go through them perfectly. We'll have time to spare, but I predict we'll burn the clock, but rapidly, I will. And we're going to start with making decisions. Feel free to stand up if you want to, or sit down, wherever you feel most comfortable with. And the first question is, what decisions have occurred to board would you have decided differently if they did?
That's a good question. Looking from older residents, I would have been competitive. I was disappointed with the redistricting because of common sentiments. I was disappointed that it kind of came about moving the fewest number of students rather than moving the correct number of students to get the results we want to have. Long-term balance capacity. There's a lot of other factors that go into the redistricting process. And I feel that those help us to make the best choice, almost the options that help us to balance capacity. And it became very contentious, as it usually does. And it came about a lot of different things, a lot of backup laws that we, on my side of the body, we didn't see quite as much relief as we would have hoped.
I did say that was the reason, but we haven't realized that in our board response and short-term circumstances. Next up, have you served on a Howard County public school system policy committee before? If so, what committee, and what was your contribution? Mr. Dumber.
Thank you. So, I haven't served on a policy committee, but I've been, I think, these past years, the O D R C, which is the operating budget review committee. And that's a group of representatives appointed by designated local organizations and also current board members have representatives as well. And the O D R C is responsible for making recommendations to the board of education for the operating budget. So, it's been, I'm actually missing the meeting right now, but it's been a challenging and interesting opportunity to see the complexity of the budget. And these are not easy decisions that the board has to take around the budget. There are so many key interests, and there are so many important programs. You know, every year, we have to make these tough decisions about whether or not, you know, what's going to come into the final budget. So, having an opportunity to anticipate the O D R C is really giving me a chance to begin even the budget and appreciate the complexity and also come up with some ideas and things I want to do differently if I'm sorry for that.
Thank you. Next up, what external leaning appointment positions would you want to serve on, and why?
External leaning, I'm not really sure.
Positions that leaning members are typically appointed to in other organizations.
So, I don't know if PTAC is here, but I think school climate, there's an issue with students not feeling that they are welcome in their schools. And at work with young people, through these, it's a whole group. We're convening high school students to come together. And I hear about a level of stress, a lot of stress. They talk about a lot of stressing in school and the competition. And then I don't hear very much about school safety, but I hear a lot about stress. And so, I, whether that committee that builds with school climate, I want to be on that. And I also wanted to share that I taught long-term high school security.
Thank you. Next question, Ms. Adler. What recent decision has the Board of Education chosen that you would have agreed with? Sorry to interrupt you, I shone some of these questions. What recent decision has the Board of Education chosen that you would agree with?
I would agree with, is it something that they, that they do differently?
Something that you support with the Board of Education.
Oh, something that I, something that I support. Well, I would certainly, certainly with, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's part of the question. And please feel free to use your time to respond to any other questions that are asked. Thank you. Give my daughter one second. Do you view at work positions differently than the newer district representative positions? And if yes, how so?
Well, I think that the art position serves the whole community and all the schools. It's not just centralized one, one, you know, area or school. And I think that that's right because I think it just allows more diversity and thought and just what's going on in the county. It makes me, it'll get me more involved in everything and more focused on what would be good, greatest among our schools and people. And that's really what I want to do is just to have the biggest influence that we can for the better for all of our schools and all of our children. So, yeah, art is fine. But they just, actually campaigning just makes it a little bit harder because you gotta, you know, to make yourself thinner to get the votes and get the people to know you if you're not, you know, in those areas. So, I'm, I'm on my, thank you.
Thank you. And I must admit, a little bit of a plug, we are PTAC council members and local units all across the county. And we have elected positions as well. So, we have members that go through the same four teams, but they represent a larger community. Next question, Ms. Rich. Have you ever served a role in the union negotiations?
No. And first, no, never served a role in the union negotiations. Our heart will pick a time you really know a little bit more about myself. I'm totally ready to, I'm from New Jersey, which is where I did serve on municipal meetings as an election official there. And so, I understand that things that all move quickly, I want them to, especially when you're dealing with a committee, doesn't get a number of people. But I will work together with the board if we want to to move things forward in the government's management to support the government education of our children. I will also tell you that I definitely have help there. I have my ideas in chemistry, and then my doctor pharmacy program in pharmacy. And so, I work with pharmacy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're running our cycle again to Ms. Rich. Thank you. Do you have experience in human resources conflict mediation?
All right, well, I don't have any specific experience in human resources, but I do have some experience with conflict. So, I, one of the jobs I had at One More Mill, I was answering customer service calls for you as postal service. And you think people get upset about the school board. They get upset when they're missing a check in the mail. So, I did have a lot of opportunity to help people that were angry and to stay calm while doing that. And that is definitely, you know, a skill. So, I learned a lot, I learned a lot from people. And I learned that, you know, if you can't stay calm, you can help people calm down. It's amazing. But in other arenas, I have that opportunity of working with PTAC to help local PTAs deal with some problems. A lot of times, you know, the problems that face are between people. I have personal problems. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dumber, now we're going to a student question. And we're having public schools. And this is actually a very good question for one of the students. How much weight will you give to student feedback on budget and priority prioritization? Yes, this came from a student.
A typically great question for a student. I'm not at all surprised. I'm so impressed with our students, our high school students, their maturity. I really strongly think that the student member of the board is an important part of what makes us, gives the board power to make these decisions. I feel like the student voice is really critical. And I am in favor of the student member of the board having a voice in budget decisions. I feel like it's, budgets are different organizations can make the hard decisions. We're values to the actions. And to be a real member of the board and to be a part of those decisions and that process. So, I'm in favor of the student, the student member of the board being a part of those conversations, right now, I don't know, but I would be a big advocate of that choice. And I think it's really understanding these are, these decisions that are made in the board of these budget decisions have a real impact on their lives and the lives of the teachers and the classrooms. So, I feel like that voice of a student is just critical to be a part of that conversation. Certainly, one of the main voices in the board making those decisions.
Thank you. Our next question is sliding into the category of the operating budget, which we could do an entire session on, but we'll keep it limited to a few questions. Howard County public school system faces $71 million dollars between the proposed budget in the board and the executive budget. What would you cut? What would you cut in your authority? What revenue source would need to be leveraged otherwise?
I don't know that I would cut one thing. I mean, I would shave something off of, just a little bit off of every program, certain programs, things like that. I could also see resources outside of the county. I know, for example, the State Board of Education is offering a grant to help with COVID relief. I forget what it means, not to help, but even though it shows terms, it's leading, helps someone. There are also opportunities to get grants and things from other sources as a result of COVID. So I would just think to do that and then shave a little bit off of the existing program because that would be one to add.
Thank you very much. And some of these are passfalls, sorry, sorry, I don't have a little hand in the drawer. But they're all relevant to the agenda. Next under the operating budget. What is the largest budget that you have ever had a role in on the horizon?
So when we were operating our business, we probably had, we had a lot of ourselves there. So we had a lot of budget care for our business. Again, one of the jobs. I would also recommend that I do think the most favorable recent board decision was to move masks and prioritize masks.
Thank you. And I hope you're not prompting any, but don't be afraid to use all your time on the clock too. We might get through these much quicker than originally planned. And we have to ask some of those tough ones again if we go through this. And also, please try to not see any vestigial of the microphones. The battery power comes in, do not carry a strong signal here. Next question, Ms. Drech. Am I pronouncing it right? Drech. I apologize. Do you support putting high school fourteen in Elk Ridge? What will you do to move it forward in the capital improvement program? Do you support putting high school fourteen in Elk Ridge? What will you do to move it forward on the capital improvement program? I can guess where this question came from.
Well, I guess my one question is, is where else would it go? Where's the other two cities that it fell?
I could go along, but it's a certain object.
I think that area is not as crowded as other areas. So I think it'd probably be a good place to move and probably move some, you know, people over in that area to move over. That's where there's a long range there. A lot of people over there are a long range. So that would spread that out a little bit. But that, that area probably is doing more growth now. So it probably is a better to, you know, have a fourteen high school. So I would be supportive of that.
Thank you. Ms. Richards. What would be your plan for dealing with the millions or deferred maintenance that Howard County Public School System has on its books? What would be your plan for dealing with the millions and deferred maintenance Howard County Public School System has on its books?
Yes, my plan, though I haven't worked in it yet off the cuff, would be to work with the other members of the board to see how we can implement it to address all the capital maintenance needs that exists. Because I think when it is not the right, it continues to push back and further down the line. I think it is important for us to see issues like that at the forefront of the issues of the overcrowding and the mask mandates and the other things that are highlighted more so. Because the facilities that are attended and used are very important, especially more how we continue to have the capability especially when it has to be to the resource available to all of our schools.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Let's see, the governor pulls aside again, Ms. Wears, and her next up. And pardon me, just one moment. Should school planning extend ten, twenty-five, fifty years into the future where population centers and schools should be within the county?
All right, well, I would definitely like to see us doing better planning for this, because those ways we mean. I mean, we do plan out quite a ways and then life happens and budgets get cut. We continually will bump it off of our plan. But I think that we do need to have kind of a change in the way that we do things because we, we're running out of land in a way. We need to be very thoughtful as far as, you know, as a county. What facility, where we're allowing to be built and preserving that space that we need for schools in those communities where we're going to need them. And I don't think we've done a good job over the years. And I think we need to look ahead and not assume that, you know, we're not going to have schools in the future. I think we're going to continue to need them. I don't think we're planning to become a terrible community that everyone wants to leave, like certain of them.
Thank you. Our next topic is one that I've personally worked on, but our organization has worked on a bit. And it's unsurprising that we see one of the questions submitted is on the topic. So with that leading, Mr. Meier, do you think relocatable portable classrooms are a solution to school overcrowding?
So portable, nobody knows of portable, right? I mean, it's a temporary thing. And I think as a temporary, it gets your job done and then keeps the kids and the teacher out of the weather and it provides a place with a wide door. I mean, it's, it's a short-term fix. Where we get into problems is where it becomes a long-term problem. And then there's a problem. We can't use portable as, as a whitewash to cover up the past, which is an epidemic. We should be really addressing those issues the right way and not just, you know, putting these as temporary facilities that then become permanent institutions. So I feel that we're all going to go in. I want to jump on to deferred maintenance question with my remaining time. Deferred maintenance is a tremendous issue in county. We have hundreds of millions of dollars for permanent and we need to get a lot of them. We're in a hole where we can't keep up with the buildings. And so what becomes of small issues turns into a major overhaul overhaul because we can't keep up. It's something we need to get with funding with the other budgets to take care of it.
Thank you very much. Our next question. What role will you play in constituent advocacy for state management funding in the school system?
I think it's a difficult.
What role will you play in constituent advocacy for state management funding?
I am a person who's an advocate. That's one of the positions that I've held for years in our community. And so I feel like I'm going to be the voice of the community advocating for what is needed at schools. And because it's an at-work position, it won't, I won't be advocating for just one particular type of school for whatever is needed in every school. I believe that one of the issues that we have is that because of the vocation of the Board of Education, the building itself, access to the general population is difficult. If you don't have means of transportation, if you don't have the privilege of being able to attend during the hours that they operate, then your voice is not heard. And so I would advocate for, on their behalf, and I also would keep the hybrid meetings on.
Thank you. I'll note we have been struggling to, the difference between hybrid and in-person. When we appreciate everyone coming out in person this evening and we hope all of you who are not able to attend this evening take the opportunity to watch our program live. Our next question, Ms. Adler. Which advising entity is most and least influential to you offering school manager structure and prioritization adjustments? That's a little.
Those advising entities?
What is the most influential, least influential advising entity to the school board that you will utilize when making adjustment, prioritization adjustments?
So I imagine that that would definitely want to be here in all the budgeting and so forth to make sure that that's really where it starts from. I would say that would have to really make sure we're working with the budget.
Thank you. Please feel free to use your time as well if you have others. Also, please be careful to unseagate to these mics that do require a little extra volume to them. Thank you. Our next question. What is your plan for making sure the county has an adequate number of schools?
The best thing I could think of is just try to borrow their support for getting funds. I mean, the numbers, the school coming in twenty twenty-three, I'm not sure when the next one's coming. But the fund seems to be a problem and not being able to get maybe some of the schools that are existing and not having the funding for that. This kind of seems in general like a backlog. So I guess it'd be something, you know, supportive or I would want to get my board, my board members to be involved in wrapping our reins and seeing what we think we could do to try and get some more money and to, or just to advocate for more money being put into that budget to provide the kids with more schools.
Thank you. Another question here is something our organization's been working on quite a bit on. It's a bit of a curveball, something to be prepared. What was the most notable item in this week's A P F O report that you would address?
I haven't read this week's A P F O report. But I did want to tell you that I will resume it as soon as I can. And also answer one of the frequently asked questions because I think it's important in terms of what you consider was highlighting and less so. And certainly the input of the students and the parents in the higher management. And I think that is what I would most definitely try on in doubt, going on the scene. More front-end members in addition to the surveys that go out by email. Because I don't think that those are as impactful as direct in-person contact. And maybe for that there is opportunity for doing so by employee community, across the county.
Thank you very much. Perfect timing. All right, our next topic, we're making very good time. And it's due to basic math. We have, well, two candidates, I'll get the rotations and the percentage, would that speed things up? We deal with those all the time in budget. All right, our next topic, redistricting. And the question is, this is Bradley Wong, so they're willing. When making redistricting decisions, how would you rank the three factors in identifying Policy sixty-ten? Facility utilization, community stability, and demographic characteristics of the student population? Which one is the most important and which one is the least important?
Thanks. So I think that we're always going to have to deal with with the best utilization. Because that's kind of the reason we end up having a redistricting because schools are well over the capacity and that's not allowed, you know, it's not what we're supposed to be doing. The other chapters and the numerous others that are listed in Policy sixty-ten, but you know, it was too kind of popular once to talk about are really important. And different kinds of ones that help us to make a better choice when we're deciding to make a plan. We want to go for solving one problem, not creating a new problem. We don't want to create concentration difficulties. We want to be able to bring our farm rates within, you know, closer to what our county average is so we don't have disparate situations going on. And we don't want to have to move the same in the middle of the case multiple times if we can help that.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Meier, our next question is, would you prefer to continue outsourcing redistricting guidance on a case-by-case basis or develop a long-term in-house analytical kickover?
Great question. I don't see anything wrong with bringing in outside experts, bringing in, you know, the district has brought in consultants to help with that process. And I think that's smart. I mean, you need to have an in-house group that can be the immediate client for those consultants. But I don't think we need to reexamine who we're bringing in. And I've bet these consultants and they're lovely people and I'm not disparaging them or their work, but there are a lot of top-notch firms out there that do this work. And I feel like we need to break away from just, using the same methods we've always used, making the same decisions the way we've always done it. I think we need to re-repeat that contract nationwide. I mean, with Howard County, we should be getting the best outlook and not just the folks who, you know, have their business card for the last five years. So I feel like having new voices and new perspectives and new approaches and new methodologies can only help us with these decisions. So I definitely favor that.
Thank you very much. Jackie, you're up next, and we are switching subjects to the special identification. The question we have next is, can you describe the I E B process and the Board of Education's role in that?
I can describe, I can describe the process. I have a certain Board of Ed's role in it, but it is an overwhelming process for parents and for students. I know in my experience with one of my children, just trying to get the child tested because I knew there was something going on. But because it was well behaved and he didn't act out, then they said, oh, no, he got to have issues. And so I had to spend our money, go to God's side and improve to get him validated. And so it's, it seems to be an unnecessarily laborious process for families. And it also seems to be driven not by actual data and facts, but opinion. And so it makes it very difficult for, I'm sure there are still people who have not had their release met as a result.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Adler, our next question is in the same category. And I apologize for that, it's a curveball, but that's what we're here for. What is your understanding of the individuals with disabilities in the Education Act I D A? Thank you. And I believe we are being joined by Mrs. Kostak. Just briefly, just to keep her in the loop, I don't know who else in the loop. We're doing a series of speed questions, which we're making good time on. And we will be concluding with questions from the audience, one minute each. And you can ask that on other questions in your time, but please answer the question asked first. And if you don't mind, we'll go get right to it. How would you increase support services for those students who have I D Bs? I apologize that mics have gone out of order, but I'll rearrange that shortly. I apologize that mics have gone out of order, but I'll rearrange that shortly. Actually, if you guys don't mind, in order to preserve the order, help out with my question back this way. And we'll follow this up. Sure. And I'm sorry to re-adjust the volume. How would you increase support services for those students who have IEDs?
Well, in working with special kids in the classroom or cell, my experience was is that if you had a child that was more night functioning or both functioning, you would have, you'd need more people in there. And my, my experience is that we need more bodies in there with a special, that kids with individual, you know, education plans because they just need more attention. They can't, they can't follow with the instruction like every other child and they just need more one-on-one. So my, my experience is I think we need to get more bodies in there, more assistance in there to help with these. With those individual, there's also times when we need to take them out of the classroom to, to do special, you know, testing and things with them for one-on-one. So at that point, you're not actually going to have a classroom at that time. So that would be my, my.
Thank you very much. Next is a new half topic, where the schools start times. Do you support later school start times for high schools?
Yes, in fact, yes. The research has shown that the adverse effects on the children, inclusive of tardiness, commitment, because of food deprivation. And mental health problems as well because of their inability to follow the lessons and not get chocolate or other classes. I think it's clear and I'm glad that the board education has made a decision to implement later school start times. Unfortunately, it won't be implemented until 2023, 2024. But yes, I definitely support the later school start times. Not for the late school students because, you know, younger students shouldn't suffer because the high school students will have the later start time. It should be for all students. We understand that.
And bonus round, this was a double question and I apologize if I didn't tell you both asked, but we're going to do it just as briefly as you can. If you do support school start times, is it at any cost? Or is there a point where you think changing start times becomes too costly?
Well, I don't think that you can put price on the health of our children. And the opportunity for all of our children to get access to the clinical education that is available in the county. So no, I don't think that there should be a point for the double education to the data that's available. That the later school start times aren't investment because of our children.
Thank you. And I'll try to read them again for those double questions. Now, now bonus round. Sorry for the words on there. First question, what would you exchange in the budget for recruiting and retaining quality teachers and administrators in our county?
I really don't think we'll be exchanging things. And I don't think we need to exchange things. I think sometimes we just need smarter policies. And so I would say that I really think we need to move towards having smarter policies that are more comprehensive. I think the one example I give is, is school transportation, right? You know, I testified in the boardroom about during redistricting and about socioeconomic moves that would balance the socioeconomic to the same extent that the plan that was mapped in did, but cut three buses. We cut those three buses, we could have invested those, those funds in teachers. And we need to do more of that. I also testified in the boardroom about how much we need to identify students properly in special education. Because special education lawsuits, as well as special education remediation, because what way too long costs us. And so I really think we need those policies instead of exchanging.
Thank you. Our next question is in the state category. What would you focus on advocating in state legislation impacts our county public school system?
All right, well, I would like to see us able to pass the shift of the burden proof on the school system. If we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, right, there shouldn't be any problem. Parents don't have the, you know, the insight, they're not in the school. How are they supposed to prove that their kids not getting the services that they're supposed to be getting? Schools should have to be proving that they are providing the services that they're getting. It's definitely a disadvantage, especially if you don't have the resources to hire, you know, outside testing, hire lawyers, to hire other experts to help you. That was supported by our board and it was supported by PTA. A lot of people were on board, but it's, it's going where, so that's more I would like to see. I'd also like to see more money coming to us. I know at the state's day, it has a lot of issues, but yeah, I mean, thank you.
Thank you. What requirements set forth by the Blue Net Curril are achievable in your term? And which are the most risk of non-compliance?
Well, I mean, they're not complying, they're not following the law. So if we're going to have to comply with everything, it's going to be really a question of how painful and expensive. For those who aren't following inside baseball, Curril and Blue Brink uses package clause that the legislature passed in 2020. It was vetoed and then the veto was overturned last year. It lays down a series of mandates we have to follow, new teacher salary wars, expanded access to prepay across the state, new mandates of the special education staff and all sorts of requirements. And in typical United States fashion, it's not going to be funded at all. So Big Bird is on the counties and the individual districts. So it's going to be a real challenge for us to make sure that we're compliant every step of the way. And I would just answer really quickly the state legislature question. One thing I would add to the board is outline different restraining and inclusion policies that counties in the state need to follow. There's a million proposals exactly, and I think that the House should have done them.
Thank you. And I know these are difficult and this is why we're going to have a written comment, so you can respond with a little more preparation. But we do like the spontaneity as well. Under innovation, how would you encourage parent involvement?
This is probably my favorite question because I believe that parents have been over the years left out of their children's education. To the point where when we experienced COVID, parents had no idea how to help their children. They didn't understand the curriculum. They didn't understand how things were done. And so they were pretty much left wondering how they could support. And so I think that there needs to be a partnership with parents, teachers, and students. I call it a three-layered school. Because if we can support them and the parents can support them along with the teachers, then we wouldn't have such gaps. If parents understood how they could help. And the other thing, if they have a fourth, it would be the community and there would be businesses and members of the community who do not have children, but have expertise in things that they can offer the school, that does not require pay, but they would do it as volunteers. And so I think we could really benefit from that.
Thank you very much. All right, our next round, we're almost to the questions from the audience. We're going to do one more quick one-minute round. I will lead with, these are hot topics currently. And I must remind everyone that the PTA Council of Howard County is a nonpartisan organization. We do not have sides on these, but they do tend to lean toward very polarized events and we hope you reach that. Hopefully for these. And the first one, to me, do you feel the small should vote on budget matters?
I'm on the paper, the student member for education voting with budget matters. As budget is very, very complex. It takes some light experience, skill. I think it is completely unreasonable to have voters voting on such important matters that really affect so many people. I think we should be voting ahead of all, most certainly.
Thank you. Next up, would you endorse mandatory vaccinations for faculty and students?
My answer to that would be no. I believe that people should have their own values or opinions or desires or their own health actually in their own hands and decisions for themselves. I think that we need to respect everybody's viewpoints and their opinions because we are all different. And that's what makes us unique and that's wonderful about us all, that we're all the same, that we're all different. We all have different values. We all seek things differently. We should learn from one another and not humanize one another or saying each other's different voices and things. Because that never leads to healing. That never leads to reconciliation. That leads to more division and I'm not for division, I'm more for unity and peace. And getting along with one another, being understanding and that. Thank you.
Thank you. We respect these are sensitive positions out there. The next one from Mr. Richards, do you feel freshman gender policies need adjustment?
This is certainly a hot topic. I do think that freshman gender policies need adjustment. And I say that because I think that safety and security of all of our children should be first and foremost in our minds. And so if that means that we have facilities available that are available to people who cannot identify as male or female, or their use, I think that that goes along with what I stated earlier in making sure that all of the children beyond, you know, capital basic unit have a sense of safety and the ability to walk along and a good sense of self. So yeah, I think that's a good reason to that and there are more human considerations.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the program, Mr. Todd. What adjustments to the Howard County Public School System programs will be made to accommodate homeschool and charter school students?
I'm not sure. I wouldn't make any adjustments. I think the current situation is just right. So parents can help with their kids, maybe send them to private school. But I support fully sending and using all platforms for public school. They have a little bit of time. So I just want to apologize. I was actually at White Lake School celebrating the last concert for my eighth grader. So that's where I was at. And, you know, I think I'm a circle of common sense. And I just want to say with respect to special education, it was the first question that I heard. I really feel strongly about supporting special education and what I've read today and what my special education friends. And I really think we need to do more to identify kids, get the interventions early and get them interventions before they're failing. Because early intervention is the best intervention.
Thank you. And Mr. Richards, we have two to go. This is just the luck of the draw with the list we have here. What safety measures will you change from current levels of the Howard County school system?
So I know this is probably what you didn't hear. So I looked it up at the top with the counties I gave a plan after roads. And I thought that seemed like a good balance. We want to have people in our schools feel safe and actually safe. And we don't want people to feel fearful if they have that experience with law enforcement. But obviously, security is of one person. We need the whole school community to be involved and keep the schools safe. I think we also need to address overcrowding. That makes it much more difficult to keep our students safe. It excludes outdoor levels. It makes it much more challenging to keep everybody safe. We need parents, we need community members to assist, and we need to make sure we have access and enough help for preschoolers. Thanks.
Okay. This last question is actually a little complicated. Are you a PTA member?
I'm going to instantly quickly then answer some of the guests probably who's made it. A member of the sponsor of the PTA and actually both the boarding secretary and correspondent secretary. Which means that I'm twice as visible as the secretary. The second only leader in our presence in all the glory and the secretaries of all the world. I want to circle back a couple pages. The rest of the question, I think really, I think we need to do everything we can in order to protect our elderly plus kids. They're so vulnerable. They're so brave. They're in the process of figuring out who they are. And we need to make sure that we're funding the new staff position in the budget for an OBTU analyst. The I office, we need to make sure that we strengthen the rainbow representative program at the school. We need to make sure we have books on our shelves and libraries to help kids vote as windows as other worlds experiences and as mirrors reflect their own experiences. So I have some really strong发言.
Well, thank you. You took the initiative to take a whole minute and I probably should have said that everyone should just raise their hands. But we would like to move to questions from the audience. So I will ask everyone to help answer that last question. Real, the three-second one, are you a PTA member?
I have been in the past and because of COVID, I'm grandmother. So I was very active in the PTA at Deppers Hill two years ago before COVID. And I look forward to getting back to it. And I was PTA president.
Thank you. Thanks, nice to have you. We're on speaker.
I am.
I'm a member of the PTA, I'm a school secretary. So I'm saving.
I am a member of the PTA of the White Lake School, I'm a secretary.
I'm a member, oops, is it on? Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a member of the White Lake School, PTSA, and Bryant Woods Elementary School, PTA, and I'm both schools' PTA and Brown.
I am a member of the PTAs, of the school 6010, and on the board is a few of them, and probably a lot of them there. Maybe you can do that some.
Thank you. And of course, we have to do that loaded question. And we always invite you to join. Our organization needs volunteers. And our ability to advocate is directly proportionate to the amount of volunteers that we receive. So we have roughly 20 minutes if we want to keep to our agenda. And I'm going to go straight to the questions from the audience now, one minute each, please. And I'm just going to continue with a lot of long questions if you don't mind. Many teachers are publicly stating significant problems in special education. What can the board do to improve besides additional funding? Any of those? Thank you.
Well, if we keep that in mind.
Many teachers are publicly stating significant problems in special education. What can the board do to improve besides additional funding?
So teachers who are specifically special ed teachers, not just teachers who work with children who have special needs?
I am a justice. In fact, she caused me to go against the law with it.
Okay, okay. And as a generally a teacher, I've had students who had, who were diagnosed with autism and who were dealing with emotional issues. And because of the size of my class, it's manageable because it's high school level. But I believe that teachers, special ed teachers, need more support. And the teachers in the middle ed classes who have students who have special needs need special, exceptional support within the. who have special needs need special, extra support within the classroom, so that they're not trying to manage everything and then children don't get paid.
Thank you. Our next question, we have one more second. Developer influence is a big concern in many in the community. Community advocacy groups have put together the Howard County No Developer, No Dark Money pledge. Have you signed it and if not, why not?
That particular pledge did not sign. I have put out a statement of my own on my website, which is very clear. It basically, it does respond to the spirit of the No Dark Money pledge of not not taking the development money. I have said that from the beginning. I understand clearly that it's an issue, it's a, it's a very big concern. So I do admit that I was not going to be capable of. So I have put out my statement, which is in the spirit of the other as well. I prefer to use my comments.
Thank you. Next up, what is your plan to address disproportionate suspension of students of color and special ed students?
I guess I would want to look at each individual case and find out what the context of the situation was, because I'm not willing to suspend how many, you know, even one of the instances were. So and as far as the disciplinary code goes, I would assume that the schools are following the disciplinary code contract. And I would hope and pray that they're distributing that equally across board in any behavior regarding any person of color, you know, who can tell our race and whatever. I would definitely look at that and just really reiterate that we need to apply disciplinary practices concisely and impartially and fairly, inconsistently to every student and not doing a manner that is just not fair.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Richards. What is your position on SEL, social emotional learning, in elementary schools? And please explain your position.
So I think that social emotional learning is very important throughout the learning continuum, particularly in elementary school, because how we feel about our place in the world and our sense of belonging in that classroom. Education about that starts from zero to five, certain early childhood. And I think that we should not just focus on elementary, middle school, and high school. But because it's so important, also address that in early education, because children begin to learn very early about their sense of self and their sense of belonging. So I think that the book has shifted throughout the learning years that I think is as far as me from zero to five.
Thank you. Ms. Hottap, the Howard County Public School System has been at the front of the pack because it has been a progressive system. How do we continue that trajectory?
Wow, that's a great question. Thank you for that. In one minute. So I think we need to keep to the bounds. We need to be leaders. We need to not just look at the jurisdictions next to us in order to figure out what the next steps are. We need to let data and research guide us. And I don't know what else to do. But, you know, yeah, that could be in many ways. And I'm just going to circle back to a few of the other things. I took the Dark Money pledge. I've also said I would not take money from political organizations or take any endorsements, because I feel like it's important that this is a nonpartisan race and it remain that way. I don't think this mob should be voting on the budget. I think it's too much for them to ask, particularly since they are in the classrooms with teachers. There's a very wonderful editorial on that, and I very much agree with that. I also think we already have mandatory vaccinations. As a microbiologist, as a scientist, I support continuing mandatory vaccinations.
Thank you. Ms. Richards. They had to write a curse on this one, just a moment. I can read curse. It's a little better. The school system is spending a large amount of time, money, and resources, maybe I can't read a curse, in the area of social justice, I believe is what they're looking to. What do you see as the benefits of this practice in the short run for the quality of social emotional needs of our students?
All right. Well, I think we really need to have our folks be placed where every student can be. And schools, like every kind of in our society, it is not new to racism or to violence or discrimination. We need to be willing to have difficult conversations, be willing to fix problems and that. Because they're not going to get better without actually fixing them. So we want to have everything we think. We want to have kids learn how to work together with each other. So when we have problems, we want to work those problems out, and it's going to be positive for every student. I really think there aren't bad kids. I think there's kids that need something and it's not being met. And I feel like we can find ways to be proactive, to work together, to make those situations better for all.
Thank you. And in respect of everyone, to keep our time schedule, this will be the final question from the audience. We have many quality questions. I'll be getting them now.
A statement, a positive statement.
And so we'll conclude with that. All these we will include on our website, and any of which you can choose to answer in a reasonable level of detail. We'll probably have a character of them online. But I do encourage everyone to go to the PTA C, each C, PTA Council, I think about that myself, which is where we'll post the survey results. We don't have a hard deadline yet, but obviously, we'll get the questions out to you as soon as practical and hope that we get the responses as soon as we can. And before we do this last question in silence, Ms. Hottap, if you have a chance to introduce yourself, we're going to do an outro, but I figured, let's do the intro before we come.
How long will it take?
Two, two.
Okay, thank you. So thank you for hosting us today. I know it's an incredible amount of work. I'm running for Board of Education because of my passion for education, particularly science education. I'm a scientist and a professor with a lifelong dedication to educating the next generation of science leaders and encouraging STEM experiences and careers. I'm running for Board of Education because I want to ensure that Howard County maintains the highest quality education system. The most pressing issues with the school system, to me, involve ensuring that every student has the best opportunity to learn and succeed in life. My biggest issue, my number one issue, is we don't have enough capacity and development continues. We need schools so that every child has a seat in a brick and mortar classroom instead of portable. Our children wake at the crack of dawn to get on buses, falling asleep in their classes. We need appropriate school start times, and we need them now. Relative to nation and adjacent jurisdictions, we significantly underbuck to identify students as needing special education. We need to identify all students early who have learning disabilities, since early intervention is the least expensive intervention. We have too many issues with safety and bullying in our schools affecting far too many children and families. Too many children are sitting out of school right now because of bullying. We need to have safety in preschool and support students of all genders, race, ethnicity, sex, and sexual orientation, as well as ability. And we need to do this while addressing discipline disparities. We also need to address learning loss. And I really think we should be using some of our Recovery Act money to reduce class sizes. I think teachers are the best ones to address learning loss. They can't do it when their classes are just overflowing with children. We should be using that money to reduce class sizes so that teachers can do what they do best, which is teach the kids, and so we can also reduce teacher suffering. I'm running to advocate and affect changes in these areas. I've testified in the boardroom numerous times, as well as in front of the county council. And I want to ensure that this work is done with excellence and integrity and transparency and without outside influence. Thank you.
Thank you. And like I said, there are many quality questions, and I don't want these to go unnoticed, because it is important for members to come out to ask questions. I will say, when you go to the written, you're going to see questions about religious advertising in school districts. You're going to see questions about what else. That's physical education. You're going to see questions about consensus as a board member, and dealing with equity and top of the school system. And I'm going to conclude with the last question from the audience that we had there. You're all on that. Are you concerned by the lack of diversity in GT in advanced level classes? If so, what will you do to improve the representation?
I think it's definitely. Yeah, I think it's definitely. We have, you know, there's, even within schools that are more integrated than most, there's still real segregation across the lines of PE or above grade, ad grade. I think it's something we can address. I feel like we need more onramps to those programs, right? Like right now, there's very set tracks. If a kid, a lot of kids develop a different basis, right? But if not, our system doesn't allow for that. And so if a kid is not getting their ability to answer, to solve problems, or the time to get the COGAT right in third grade, they're not going to be in the above grade math. If they're not in the above grade math in fourth grade, they're not going to be in the above grade math in sixth grade unless the parents know that they get added in. So I feel like we need to have more onramps in elementary schools. And we also need to support our kids better with parent educators and math specialists and reading specialists who've been cutting our budgets in the past two cycles. We need to restore those positions, and I think that's why.
Thank you. And we're going to wrap up. And I do need to be remiss without thanking everyone from the PTA Council, board members who came out, members who came out to speak, from the, that are running for office, audience members and their participation with questions, and our online viewers who can see this. Thank you for being interested in education, playing a part to ensure we have a positive response for children. And oh, I forgot, in the back rows are my entire family, who put aside a lot of events and times to help facilitate this, and I appreciate that greatly. And we are going to be doing this again, next two Wednesdays from now, with the county council. Please, all of you, come, because we picked a really sneaky date, not intentionally, but it is the day after they pass the school budget. So it will be a very interesting day to have a forum. And our next one, unfortunately, because of the bookings, will be June twenty second. But that will be our county executives and our state delegation having to come in to attend a forum, and we'll see if they come and work us for that. With that said, let's go down the road. We'll start with Ms. Hottap for including her remarks. Two minutes, please, and a few questions.
Great. Thank you. It feels like I just got here and gave my opening remarks. Okay, so my goal is to increase excellence, integrity, transparency, as I, like two minutes ago, while advocating on behalf of our students and their families, as well as teachers and all staff. In addition to my experiences in teaching and education, which I don't remember if I mentioned, but I'm a science professor. I have a long history of training HCPSS high school students and alumni in cutting edge techniques in my research group, with a particular emphasis on underrepresented minorities in science, and particularly in my field. During the pandemic, I also was able to organize a Nobel Laureate to visit an HCPSS middle school in support of the seventh grade curriculum. I'm pretty stoked that I was able to pull that off. And that was really just because we were doing online learning that I could pull that off. I've been a parent. I've been a member of our elementary school PTA and our middle school PTSA. I serve as PTAC representative for both. I've also served as a judge for the National Science Fair. I have a true dedication to particularly science education at all levels. I've also helped organize the elementary school, middle school, the elementary school science fair, and advocated in the boardroom for a middle school science fair that would be a Broadcom eligible science fair. I'm committed to excellence in Howard County education. And, you know, I just, I feel very passionate about these things. I already watch all the board meetings. I attend many board meetings. I testify in the boardroom. I testify before county council about many of the matters that are really important to me. One of the biggest is probably special education. I have two kids who are in special education, and I think that special education really needs our focus and our emphasis. And so those are some of the issues that are important to me. Thank you.
All right. So I thank you again, everyone for being here. I am here because I believe that it's not just about me, it's not just about my own kids, it's not just about my neighborhood, it's about all children. That's why I've been involved in PTA. I want to make every child's potential reality. Why I've been involved in PTA, I want to make the world a better place. It's been my goal to be that person that comes and does the thing that needs to be done, to bloom and to look where it stands. So that's why I decided to run. I want to make sure that our students have the things that they need, the school buildings, the teachers, the staff, the space, primary school of children, and the materials that they need to do the work of teaching and learning. I want to make sure that everything has the supports that they need, whether it's, you know, special ed or just other things that they need to be successful. And I want to make sure that we do a good job communicating with everyone. I want to make sure that people can get the value, the very timely and essential information, like when you're going to have school on a day that we're not really going to have school. I want to make sure that that information gets out to people in the languages that they can understand. And I want to be able to get real, true feedback from our teachers, from other staff at the school, and from parents and families. And I want to work with every person, not here for one side or the other, or any particular group. I was probably thinking the first four of my numbers, my math, and then the dark money and the dark money pledge. That's important.
I just want to say thank you to Brent for the bridge facilitating. Thank you to all of you in the audience who chose to be here on a beautiful spring evening, sitting in the cemetery listening to. And you're here because you care about our teachers. And you're here because you care about our schools. And thank you to all you folks for watching at home, when there are much more entertaining videos on YouTube, you're watching us here today, because you care about us. We all care about you. We want the best for our schools. And we can have, we can have innovative twenty first century schools that are excellent, that prepare our kids for teachers that we can't even imagine. That is within our grasp, but we can't get there by doing the same things we've always done. We need innovative school systems. We need new ideas. We need aggressively, new strong leadership. We need to hire and retain the very best educators. And we need to keep them and make them better. We need new strong programs in place to take good teachers and make them great teachers through coaching, observation, and feedback, and training. We need programs in place to take teachers who are interested in going into the administrative track and turn them into principals, turn them into strong leaders. It doesn't happen by itself. Leadership doesn't happen by itself. But we can create these strong school leaders that need tomorrow by setting up programs today. Other districts do it, we don't. We can fix that. We need to make sure that every kid in Howard County, every child, every student is getting the very best education. Right now, some are, and many are not. Many families of students with disabilities are struggling because the IED process is broken. We can fix that. We can make sure that kids from every single, and I believe so strongly, kids from every single of those counties, no matter what the language we speak at home, no matter their race, no matter their, you know, the job their parents had. Every child deserves the very best education. And that's within our grasp as voters. And this election is going to be critical for what happens to school safety, I would venture. So thank you all for being here.
So thank you all for being here tonight. Thanks for your attention, your great questions. Thanks to, uh, PTA Council for this, uh, that. Kishni.
And, um, PTA City, we bring out the candidates a little bit. Um, but, um, I think too, um, when I think about all the candidates and all the skills and villains that we have represented here, we have a great group of people, but I think I have a unique set of skills and experiences that I think most of you all do not have. Having a learning challenge for myself, a learning difference, having, uh, children who have experienced challenges themselves in the G T track, having brain children now in this system, having taken children all the way through the system, all the way through high school and college, having the experience of collaborating as a PTA member, as a member of the Citizens Advisory Council, as, um, a facilitator for the, um, speak up, Hoco with the youth. I am constantly in, um, involved with young people. I am even one of the facilitators for Talk With Me, which deals with zero to three engagement, which is probably the most critical thing that we have not paid enough attention to. Those, those critical three years, about eighty-five percent of the brain is developing that time, and we lose so much ground because we don't pay enough attention to that very important time in their lives. And I believe that if we would take the time and invest in those three years, the trajectory of children would be completely changed because I believe that parents don't understand the importance of it because they're not being told. The doctors, the nutritionists aren't, aren't telling the parents, the community doesn't know. So I think there needs to be an all-out effort to let the entire community understand that when they see a baby from zero to three, that we're engaging them and when we see parents with devices, we want to be careful.
Thank you for presenting this segment. Thank you very much. Questions were really well thought out. I'm running for the seat because I am very concerned and so are many other parents. I hear from them regularly. The school system is accepting a national political ideology. I see changes taking place that I view as a divergence from solid K through twelve education system. I'm taking on this campaign because I strongly believe someone has to have the courage to speak about and act on it publicly. I'll be the voice of parents who expect a solid K twelve education for their children. I want to help return the Board of Education to the nonpartisan entity it's required to be and focus on core education and safety. Schools must be safe for students to learn and safe for teachers to teach. Schools are the club of the community. A community school helps a student feel safe and connected. Students need to be encouraged to apply themselves to the task and be graded on their work. And our hardworking teachers need to have all of our support to teach our children the core education they need to go on to their next chapter after graduation, whatever their talents and interests may take them. I want to put the focus of education back in the Board of Education. I will do the hard work, take the hard posts, and make motions in support of these measures. We owe this to our children and to the parents, the taxpayers. I have no aspirations for any elected office other than come and, and Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your evening and having us to be here and just listen to us and have us throw a little bit of the questions, but just thank you for your questions as well because we know that we have a county that greatly cares about our children. And, um, I, I agree with what Meg said and, and I didn't do this just because of my, my child. I did this for everybody's child because I think that, um, we've all been through a, a rough season lately as just individuals and community. And I believe that, um, the best way to love and to listen to one another is to really just hear one another and come in, you know, no pretenses, just let's talk, let's learn who we are, um, let's find out what, what we want, what we desire, what we want for our school, what we want for our children. And, um, I just feel like we need to build community back again and build, take down walls instead of put them. And, um, so that's why I'm here. I just want to communicate with, uh, parents, students, faculty, um, and just get everybody else feedback and just do the best we can for everybody. Thank you.
Sorry. Can you reset the camera?
Thank you for inviting me to participate tonight. I shared earlier that my background is in healthcare and I know that you all have the ability to have a healthcare team collaboration on this Board of Education so far, I know it's important and that is what I will bring, based on my background and knowing how important it is to work together with others who learn how to do that in kindergarten and even in pre-aid, I believe is taught, you know, how to work together. I think that that's what's very important. I also want to share a response, um, to the earlier question about, uh, the disproportionate discipline that occurs in accounting. The Board of Education has obtained research and data and analyzed it and it is present in accounting. And I think that implicit bias is a big part of that. We need to have the same high expectations for all of our children, not just some, not just for the G and T track, but all of our children in regards to what they go by. I think that something that didn't come up tonight that I did want to address as well is, um, the effects of, the lingering effects of the pandemic, COVID-19, on our children. Learning costs is a big cluster that's still going around. And what I would propose is that we focus on learning acceleration, keeping those expectations high for our children because children rise the occasion when we set, um, the appropriate expectations for their great ability and their abilities. And so I want you to know that that's what I'm planning is to work for the development and education of our children and making sure that our reputation of having a great school system continues but also improves, um, for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. And thank you all for coming on tonight. Um, please don't run for the exits. Uh, we have the woodwork for a little bit. If you want to talk to candidates or candidates, we should talk with the public. Uh, all I ask is that you don't take the cameras as part of papers. I mean, this, to press this online. Uh, this format is, um, slightly repeated from what we've had before, a little shorter format and a little faster questions. I hope it worked and I also know there's some frustrations with, with some of the topics that we later will cover. Hopefully we got a broad depth of topics and we will follow up with greater content. And, um, thank you very much, a well-formed electorate and it's very important for serving the county and the children of that. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you.